Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, staff, members of council. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. I see that we have quorum of council and we're going to be starting. I saw somebody outside, so there are some seats available in the front if you want to try and squeeze in. But this is a great crowd. Thank you very much for coming this evening, each of you. We do have some preliminaries that we have to go through to make this a fully constituted meeting of committee of the whole, and then I will have some opening comments. So I have a motion from councillor Durley that the agenda for the March 22, 2016 special meeting of committee of the whole be adopted as circulated. I also have an amendment from councillor Durley that item 523, which is the financial overview.
Five two three.
I'm sorry, 523, which is the financial overview section, moves and changes places with the, is that right? 521?
521.
So it will be the financial overview and then the project manager presentation and then the, okay. So it will be the financial overview first, followed by the project manager presentation, followed by the architectural concept presentation, okay? So that's the amendment. To the amendment first, members of council, any, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? That amendment carries. And now to the main motion as amended, all those in favor? Any opposed? That carries as amended. So once again, ladies and gentlemen, we will have the, following my introductory comments, we'll have the presentation of the financial overview. We know a lot of people are interested in that. Then we'll have the project management presentation, which is the costing, and then we'll have the architectural concept presentation. We do have another piece of business, and that is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. That's any conflicts of interest any members of council may have. Do any members have any conflicts of interest?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No? Thank you. Can that be so noted? Thank you. So I do have some opening comments. What a great crowd we have this evening. Thank you very much for attending. It's wonderful to see this much interest in our community in something that's been discussed in our community for many, many years. It shows that there's very much interest. The desire for community facilities is something that's been talked about and studied in Pelham for many, many years. In late 2012, council directed staff to provide an executive summary of the seven consultant and staff reports, which date back to 1990, when Marty Collins was mayor, recommending new or improved recreational and community facilities. In 2003, based on that work, we hired Leisure Plan International to conduct a statistically significant resident survey about our community's needs and preferences. Leisure Plan also tested the business case for various community facilities. In 2014, Leisure Plan presented a number of reports demonstrating sustaining demand for a community center and recommending that the town construct a facility in the East Font Hill development area. Council also established an architectural design advisory committee with dedicated volunteers representing various recreation user groups, youth, seniors, artists, service clubs, and the community at large. During 2015, this committee worked with the architect, Leisure Plan, and staff to develop concept drawings and presented a design. Council directed staff to hire a construction manager to review and refine the design and develop an operating pro forma. I'm proud to say that this has been an iterative process over the last four years. Iterative being, we move ahead, we come back a little bit. We move ahead, we come back. This has been a genuine community grassroots endeavor. Through all this work, council and the architectural design advisory committee have balanced the expertise of experts with the views from the community. Thank you to the members of the architectural design advisory committee for working together with staff, the experts, some of whom we'll be hearing from, and the community to get to where we are this evening. And I think it would be important to introduce each of those members who are able to join us this evening. We had special reserved seating for them. We have the chair and representing the community at large of the architectural design advisory committee, John Nichol. Give a wave, thank you. And the vice chair, James Federico. Thank you. Representing other sections of our community, you don't have to stand if you're not able to. We have Gail Hillier, representing the seniors advisory committee. Give a wave, thank you. Sharon Cook, representing the joint accessibility advisory committee. Yvette Young, who is a citizen representative. Doug Freeland, representing Pelham's community service clubs. Brian Bleach, representing the Pelham Panthers basketball. Sean Reeves, representing Pelham figure skating. Ava Colangelo, representing the mayor's youth advisory council. Jen Benson, representing our community's performing arts. Victoria Morrissey, representing the Pelham Minor Hockey Association. Tim Toffolo, representing the Pelham Panthers junior B hockey team. There are other members that weren't able to attend. I don't think they're here, so I have in my notes Don Davis, representing the old timers hockey. Mary Powley, representing visual arts in our community. Alyssa Girardi, representing the mayor's youth advisory council as well. She's the prime minister. And we also had, through this process, Janet Saint Amon, representing the YMCA, but she's no longer a member. We had excellent staff assisting with this, including our C A O, Darren Otway, our treasurer, Carrie Pupo, our clerk, Nancy Bizotto, and Kim Holland, who is our director of facilities, or manager of facilities. I hope I didn't just give her a, just gave her a raise. I didn't need to. And of course, Vicki Van Ravensway, director of recreation, culture, and wellness. Let's give a round of applause to those volunteers. Thank you. We had the clerk check out how many hours of meeting time. Forty hours straight. That's a lot of meetings. Thank you very much for your hard work and dedication. We really appreciate it. Thank you. All of this work confirms the need and the sustaining demand for a community center that would include adaptable and multipurpose community spaces, a double gymnasium, an indoor walking running track, and a double arena. This facility could serve as the hub for residences of all ages to gather and enjoy a wide variety of recreational, health, and community activities for many years. Tonight, council will receive updated information about the community center, including presentations from the architect and the design and elevations, the construction manager reviewing the construction costs, and staff about financing. Council plans to officially receive this information, thereby making it publicly available, as a start of a number of weeks of community engagement. The weeks of public engagement also include at least one open house at the largest venue possible, so folks can speak freely and directly to the architect, the construction manager, town staff, ADAC, committee members, and councillors. This is tentatively set for April 16th, but we haven't yet confirmed that. So watch various media for more information. On behalf of council, I want to say to each of you that's here and those that are watching, thanks again for your interest this evening and over the next number of weeks regarding this exciting project for our community and its potential to improve our quality of life in Pelham. Thank you. As the agenda was changed, we'll now have the financial overview presented by town staff, our treasurer, Ms. Carrie Pupo, and our chief administrative officer, Darren Otway.
Members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening. I'm Darren Otway, the chief administrative officer for the town, and I'm joined by my colleague, Ms. Carrie Pupo, the director of corporate services. I'd like to start by thanking my colleagues around the table, first of all, because although I am standing here to present tonight, I would not be in a position to do so if it wasn't for the work of every single department within the town that has worked so, so much, so hard in order to come up with the information that you're going to see tonight. They really do make it look easy, but it has been a tremendous amount of work. So to all my colleagues at the town, I thank you very much for your participation tonight, but your work and your assistance in keeping me sane over the last little while. My back is turned to the audience. I apologize. I hope everyone can hear me. But I'm here tonight again with Ms. Pupo to present the financial analysis for the construction of the community center. So I don't need to go into a lot of detail with regards to the project background, with regards to the community center. This is something that the mayor, I think, has covered quite adequately. However, I think that it is important to reiterate the fact that there has been two decades of planning. This is not a new project. I am a newcomer to this project in the sense of my term of service with regards to the overall scope. This is something that goes 20 years in the making. There was five major consulting studies done from a wide variety of consultants. There's been countless community consultations over those years, and each one of those inevitably has led to the same conclusion. Pelham needs a community center. So we want to also acknowledge the fact of why we want a community center, why the community wants a community center, and that is largely around quality of life. This is a social and recreational hub that will replace Pelham's aging single pad arena and will deliver a broader choice of opportunities currently available by enhancing, again, enhancing our quality of life. And we also feel that this is an investment in our future as a community, and through a wide variety of financial tools, the center can be built with a modest taxpayer contribution. And that is what I want to stress tonight, and that is the message and the presentation that we'll be making explaining on how we're proposing to do that. And this will be the, literally, the heart of our community for generations to come.
Okay, so going, just doing a review of the 2016 municipal budget that was presented to council back in February. What was determined, that there was a debt affordability limit, a level of $37 million. That was proposed and presented to the 2016 budget for consideration. What was proposed at that time as well, that the debenture term would be a 30-year debenture, and that a modest increase on that budget was included of 3.44% for the 2016 tax levy increase. This would mean an average assessment of $46.66 for the entire year for the average residential home, or $3.90 per month. At the time of budget presentation, there was things that we did not know. One of those things was that provincial and federal grants were not available at that time for any recreational, cultural hubs. We did not know what the final cost of construction for the project would be at that time. We did know that there was some development charges contributions, but we didn't know post this bylaw, which ends in 2019, what the development charges would be for this project. And we also did not know what our surplus lands were in the East Font Hill area or what their values were. So these were the items that we were not aware of at the time of budget that we needed to do some work on to bring it forward to today. What we know now is what the construction cost for the new center is, and that's 36, just over 36.2 million. We do know that the surplus land in the East Font Hill land represents about $12 million worth of funding. And we do know from our consultants that the development charges that can be attributed to this facility is over $12 million.
So let us get a little bit more specific on how we came up with those numbers. First of all, I'd like to present the map of East Font Hill. As council will be aware, this is the portion of land that the town owns. This area of land on the corner of Race Road and Highway 20 represents a total of 32 acres when it was purchased. Now, as we've moved through the last several years, you can see that our land has been divided up into different blocks. So I'll start at the top right-hand corner, and you'll notice a C. The C block is the stormwater pond that has already started construction in that area. The stormwater pond will accommodate stormwater runoff from the East Font Hill development, but also large volumes of water coming off Highway 20. So there are other owners besides the town, and we have the private sector as well as the region, which are all contributing to that cost of construction. We have, in the center, you'll see a B, a small block, that is the proposed area that we would use for the town plaza, the piazza, if you will, and the accompanying Munnerf, which is a bit of a twist on the traffic circle, so it would replace the traditional intersection at the center of the development. Then we have F, which you see is labeled as Shaw Avenue. That is the road that would be required to be built in order to facilitate the traffic flow through the development. And you'll also note, running north-south, we have Wellspring Way, which is another major road that will cut through the development, that will divide the property up into more of a grid pattern. You will see D. D represents the total land area where the proposed community center would be located. This is the footprint that that would represent. And we have two yellow blocks, A and E, which represent the property that is left for potential development. So of the 32 acres, just to remind council and the public, the land was purchased in 2005 for a total cost of $3.5 million. The exact number is on my presentation. There is a total of 19.75 surplus acres that is owned by the town. That amounts, that is the total of block A and block E. And the estimated valuation of those lands is $600,000 per acre. I will say to council that this is, $600,000 does not represent a formal appraisal, however, we feel it is a very conservative number of the value. We have consulted our town's appraiser with regards to this, and we've also compared it with other properties in the region and in the area. And we feel that optimally, we could at full bill outreach a potential of possibly $800,000 per acre. So for budgeting purposes, what we know is $600,000 per acre. That equals a total of $12 million in revenue that we would stand to gain at a minimum from the sale of the land that is remnant, that again would be applied towards the community center.
Okay, so one of the other things that we didn't know at the time was the development charges and how that would impact on the funding for the community center. Working, I've worked with the consultants, CN Watson, since the budget presentation time to come up with what our solution would be for funding through the next five bylaws with respect to development charges. This is where they came back with us with the principal amount of $12,138,592 that could be funded through development charges. So for the public's knowledge and for others, the development charges are collected from developers to fund growth-related projects and have no impact on the tax levies. So the $12 million that we would debenture for this portion would be covered from development charges collected throughout the town over the next five bylaws. All things remaining constant, that means that there's no significant changes in other areas, there would be no increases in future development charges as a result of this.
So the other piece of our puzzle is the financial, or sorry, the fundraising efforts of the community. Again, council received a report, I believe in early December, that showed the fundraising feasibility study results. It showed an 85% approval rating for the project. 12% of respondents expressed reservations about the project and 1% objected outright. So we see very positive support for the project across the community, and this is the latest in many, many polls and surveys that have been done. Based on this information and based on the findings of the fundraising feasibility study, the fundraising target has been set at $3 million. That $3 million, again, would go towards the cost of construction.
So what we have not considered in any of these funding mechanisms at this point are grants from other levels of government. At this time, we still don't, do not have any information that the rec center, community centers would be included. We have not included any sale of other surplus lands that the town might own unrelated to the East Font Hill lands, and we have not included any new assessment as a result of growth that occurs on an annual basis. And so having said that, with all the discussions that we previously had, as indicated previously, the sale of the surplus lands will contribute $12 million towards the project. Development charges will contribute 12.1 million towards the project, donations 3 million, and the debenture to the tax, that would be the cost to the taxpayer, would be just over $9 million. So, moving on. The financial breakdown of that $9 million that would be debentured, Infrastructure Ontario interest rate for a debenture is approximately 3.42 at this time. It's available on the Infrastructure Ontario website for any public member to view. With a 30-year debenture, it allows us to get that $9 million within that funding mechanism that we already have included in the 2016 operating budget, and that was the increase of 3.44%. So given that and the information that's presented tonight, there will be no further tax levy increase on the residents of Pelham for the build of the community center.
And that concludes our presentation, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Otway. Ms. Pupo, for your presentation. Great news. Thank you. Do members of council have any questions at this time for the presenters? Councillor Durley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, I didn't see any mention of park dedication. Is there possibilities of funding coming through with, from park dedication from any development?
No, park, park, parkland dedication is...
Exclusive.
Exclusive to what? Like it's contained within itself? So it's a, basically, it's a percentage that a developer would pay or contribute to the town, based on whether it was a commercial or a residential development. It's unrelated to this particular project.
Could not some of that be applied to this project?
No, the parkland dedication would be applied to the parks around it, like the Munnerf area and the piazza, but not to the actual build.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councillor Rybiak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, just for clarity, just so I really understand this. So in 2016, our tax bill is going to include for the average household, I think you said 46.7, $46.70, thereabouts. And in 2017, 2018, going forward, you anticipate no impact on the levy at all. That $46 caps it? That's it? No more after that?
That is correct. The nine million, as I indicated on Infrastructure Ontario, the interest rate of 3.42 for $30 million debenture will give us a $9 million debenture, and that fits within the principal and interest component that we added to the 2016 operating budget. So there would be no further increase to fund that $9 million in future taxes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so we are going to hear, no doubt, from our construction manager the level of confidence he has in the estimate that's there, but you're saying that the estimate of the project is 36-point-something million? And there's no anticipation that that's going to go out of hand? We'll hear from the construction manager, but if it, it shouldn't, it wouldn't, because we said it shouldn't. And there won't be, and it won't.
Yeah, we'll hear from, hear from the construction manager on that and...
So my point, though, is that what you've got up there covers the entire cost.
It covers the entire cost of the project.
Just to build on that, too, to answer the councillor's question, through, Mr. Mayor, what you'll notice in the construction manager's presentation is the contingencies that are required in a project built this size to make sure that there is adequate dollars for things that are unexpected, and they'll be presenting that information in more detail with, later tonight.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I have are comments, I'll make those later.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions? Councillor Pap.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Very, very comprehensive. I'm just trying to understand, blocks A and E, the ones that are for sale, right? Those are, is it, is it assumed that those would be serviced? Is that what the evaluation is based on? Or unserviced?
Those are all, that land is all serviced, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the blocks that I've shown as well are just the available land. That is not necessarily, you wouldn't necessarily sell the entire block the way I've shown it. You may probably want to piece it down, so you're selling blocks or you're selling areas of an acre or less to maximize the value of the land. That's where the most dollars will be generated, the smaller the, the size of the lot that's sold. There are decisions that need to be made that will impact price, so if council's looking, again, there's the medical center and the retirement home, that is an objective of council, but there's other, other opportunities for mixed work, mixed-use, commercial, residential, additional, commercial, et cetera. So those have not yet been contemplated. They will have an impact on price, but again, regardless of what the use is, we're confident in the $600,000 per acre number.
I'm happy with that. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Junkin.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. One thing that I don't quite get is the, I get the $12 million for the sale of the property, but that sale, we don't know if that's going to happen one year, five years, or 10 years out. So what we have to take a full debenture of and cover the whole cost, and then as we sell the property, we'll pay it down? Or, whatever, tell me, is that a correct assumption?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, the land, we have a two-year build-out on this construction. So we are now working towards getting the land properly designated to whatever the condition it's going to be for sale, and then starting the process of selling the lands off. So with respect to the timing of the loan from Infrastructure Ontario, what they'll give you is a construction draw loan. So what they're allowing us to do is extend the timing of having to debenture that final piece so that we have more time to sell off those lands. And that's, I'm in conversation with Infrastructure Ontario right now to set up those timelines. As soon as council gives a go-ahead with the, the community center, then I can formalize that agreement with them.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? So the, there was one slide there about what's not included, so no, no government funding is not, so that's not assumed? Is that correct? Okay. Sale of surplus lands by the town, so unrelated to the East Font Hill. So any other lands that the town has not included in this number at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and new assessment as a result of economic growth. I know what it means, but can you explain it, what it means?
Sure, through you. Every year, the town receives supplemental tax assessment growth increases. So what that means is usually in, say, 2016, someone comes in, takes out a building permit to either construct a new home or add an addition on, put a pool in. That usually impact goes out and assesses that value of that new addition, new build or whatever, but it's not until the following year. So when they come and they give you a supplemental, it's not included in your base roll that you're setting your tax rate on. So that is, when you get those supplementals, it's considered what is new growth and it's continued growth. So that is something that we have not considered in this. Last year, as you recall from the budget process, our growth was 1.83. We're anticipating it's going to continue on that method of around 2%, given all the development that's occurring within the town, but we have not considered that, and it's something that can be considered for use for other areas.
Okay, thank you. And then as well, the, I think it's the slide before about development charges? So no specific increases? It says, what do you, what does that mean? All things remaining equal?
Yes, just in discussions with the consultants to ensure, you know, what I, the understanding of how this would impact on the development charge studies going forward, what they're indicating is they've maxed out the service standards for recreation, and that's what has allowed us this $12 million. So in order to do that, some of the other recreation projects might have to come out of the DC bylaw, but the nice, the luxury we have there is they're covered under parkland dedication, so there's no loss of other funding sources other than, outside of the tax levy. We can, we can do that without hitting the tax levy 100%. So what that means, what, and then what that means for the bylaw overall is if transportation, you know, comes in and they need a huge more service standard levels met, it could increase the debentures, the bylaw going forward, but that's just the way you want the bylaw to work. And as you know, as we're doing the bylaw, we make sure that it's an affordable piece for the developers at the same time that we're working on it. So that's something we would consider after 2019. So that's something we would consider after 2019 when we're developing the new bylaw.
Thank you. It's, I think it's important to know that there's no projections on that increasing above what I would, would be normally there, so that that development can occur and help pay for the community center, the new growth in the community center. So thank you very much. Thank you. Those are my questions. Are there any other questions for members of council at this time? There may be some later, there may not. But thank you very much for the presentation. There, thank you.